Okay.
Everyone, and welcome to the May sixth meeting of both of planning board. Tonight we have some ministry business to get through. It's followed by no public hearings and then for application reviews. To begin, I'd like to start with the meeting minutes from April fifteenth, on my sixteenth meeting. Were there any corrections going around? I not can I do a motion to approve the April fifteenth meeting?
I'm good.
Second. All favor?
Aye.
Um, next, let's move on to our updates. Were there any updates from the both board and also county planning board?
Uh, not this time, we need to have tomorrow.
Great, thank you. Um, any updates from our director of
Uh, nothing here. When we get done with the updates, I'll just go over the local law referrals.
Um, and were there any updates from the town planning board?
I checked their previous meeting minutes. They have two subdivisions that they were reviewing, and that was the extent of their meeting. They do have a new director of planning and zoning and code enforcement, the equivalent of my position. It was one of their planning board members who has stepped down from that position and taken the position of the director. I'm drawing a blank on his name, but.
Good. Um. Do any other board members have any updates?
Yeah, only me, Bronson, but the federal garden actually.
Um, so next I'd like to look at these local laws or
Yeah, well, local law, the first is the law that established a lot of improvement. Um, we commented back to them that it has been approved by the village board and filed with New York State, so it is now in effect as local law one. And as a matter of fact, we have our first application tonight. Um, secondly, you have a new referral from the village board uh, for the establishing the design review board. Uh, several years ago, they adopted a resolution which named uh, changed the name of the historic preservation to the design review board and historic preservation commission. The village attorney and I spoke, and we both believed it probably should have been done as an actual local law to was to grant them the authority rather than simply a resolution. Uh, so this is to address that. Um, it has been sent to the that board and they've offered some comments. Uh, this is set for public hearing at the village level next Wednesday. Um, they may or may not adopt it that night. Uh, it's also been referred to the county planning board for tomorrow night's meeting. And um, by statute, anything land use needs to be referred to this board. So if we have any comments on it, um, it's fairly boilerplate language, an awful lot of the same language that's in the historic preservation. And it will continue to be the same people, but they will act in two different capacities. So that's the extent of this.
It doesn't make any changes.
Doesn't make any changes to our power or referral or the zoning code. The only difference is the zoning code right now says referrals to the historic preservation commission. In time, we will correct that to say designer view board. But either way, uh, this was the first step in actually um, codifying that board and their authority.
The zoning code is what defines which applications.
Correct, correct. Everything in the historic district goes, uh, everything in the uh, NBR district. Some of the B two and some of the gateway are referred to that board in an advisory capacity to advise this board.
Well, I have no uh, objections on it or comments to it. That's to codify the system that's already in place. Yes. You bring the sound, it's not for potential dissolution happens.
And that was really the the reasoning behind it to establish this board officially prior to any sort of dissolution to, so there was no gray areas.
Well, I think well, it's very well intentioned. I think that it's pretty subjective. And if you look in in Europe, you go well, for example, you'll see, you know, buildings are much older than the ones we have here, right next to a modern building. I mean, it sort of adds to the character of the of the city. And I feel like honestly, I would rather see a well-designed, modern building uh, next to a really old building than a fake old building next to a really old building. That's just my opinion.
Does this require uh, period? I mean, it's, it doesn't seem to set out um specific standards. It's just that it has to be reviewed and it has to be considered, but it doesn't necessarily say that you couldn't, you couldn't have something, you know.
No, they they act as advisory to this board, so this board can certainly do whatever they choose to do, but uh, the design review board was put in place to to review those particular areas, certainly the historic district, uh, which the historic preservation already reviews all the, any work done, even things that don't come to this board go to them uh, for things like replacements, obsciding, things like that. Um, they're not doing the residential districts. They're only doing essentially the NBR, the gateway and the P two. And primarily mostly for commercial, although in some cases they do review residential.
It's like on the third page, there's criteria and it talks about being compatible with the existing buildings, not necessarily matching them, but that might be the one that's comments, you know.
Yeah, and if anybody wants to make individual comments, either in writing or or come to the public hearing. And this board is not required to to offer back any comments unless you choose to, or you could simply do what you did last time, which to say you have no comments. And if you wanted to wait until next meeting, I, you know, the rush is not there, so I could simply say to the village board that you, this board wanted to wait a meeting. That's that's kind of your.
Uh, one of us wants to say something individually, you know, that doesn't.
Correct.
Okay. Yeah. Um. Moving on, is there anyone here tonight that would like to make a public comment on it?
Yes.
Yes, yes, please come up and hear me talk.
Do you mean Jason Taylor? Now I just wanted to make a sort of general comment about the kind of evolution of the NBR, the zoning district in its way that the proposals have realized that over the course of the code being adopted. It seems to me, and I've said before, that I really believe in the kind of mixed-use, complete streets vision that is embodied in the code. Um, but it also seems to me that it's the clear intent of the code to have buildings that are predominantly grounded on the ground floor, residential on second third floors and I understand that in the current market, you know, there's a high demand for residential units and there's a lower demand for different office space because of those different homes. But I feel like the development proposals that we've come into recently are kind of hacking the code in two ways. One is that the code specifies that the side facing three two must be non-residential. The other sides, sides not facing thirty two are not encouraged to be non-residential. It even says for residential on the ground floor, there should be a special use permit with the exception of accessible. Makes sense. Some of these mobility issues, ground floor couldn't access it, but what we're seeing in implementation is proposals that, first of all, that should increase the number of sites. So you have eight sided building in one thirty seven where David used to be. And then the former Agway site is eleven sided building, proposal for the um site next to O C's is a twelve sided building. So now you're only required to be a non-residential on one out of twelve sides. And they are looking at proposals that say in the case of the one fifty one proposal, something like thirty one ground floor units that are all accessible and then only like six retail non-residential, uh, non-residential units and it's clear that they're not restricting those units to people with mobility issues because there's only eight eighty eight parking spaces in the whole plant. But thirty one of those units are accessible units and therefore like didn't require any kind of special use permit to be included over time. Um, and I just feel like there the board should be thinking about where the threshold, is there a point where you say, Williams, there's less than eight percent of the total square footage of this building is non-residential. And, you know, nominally, the whereas it is strictly speaking within a letter of the code, the spirit of the code is sort of imagining that one third of this square footage is going to be ground for providing services, workplaces, retail offices, you know, to extend the local before the, you know, the village, all the complete street stuff, but we're in in a way it's rolling out, we're seeing less than ten percent of the total ground uh, total square footage for the non-residential usage. And I think in the one fifty one proposal, it's like seven or eight percent of the total square footage. So the question is, is there a threshold there? And then where it actually has a practical impact has to do with the claiming of the reduction in parking space. So the um, I think it's the one thirty seven building that one like David used to be. Um, they've got some offices on the ground floor, even though it's only about ten percent of the total building and they claim the forty percent reduction in parking permits for that. And then the proposal that's still before the board, um, for the 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 large project is paying a twenty percent reduction in necessary parking spaces for the time of use exemption. But again, it's less than ten percent of the total square footage is non-residential. And so the idea that the twenty years exemption, that people that get the employees and customers of the businesses are arguing using the state, it just doesn't. So anyway, I believe in the spirit of zoning, but I feel like the board should be mindful of where are the limits, where are the points when there is just not enough non-representational space in the project for it to trigger the parking exemption and or should the board ever be in a position to push back and say, you know, really, the vision, the spirit of this zoning code wants the ground floor to be a place that is offering services and retail businesses, offices, whatever for the community and not sort of playing games about saying, oh, we've got thirty one accessible apartments on the ground floor, so you know, any So I just, you know, again, when you think about even zero place, a four sided building and it's got some non-residential uh, footage on the back and the side even in the front. And then you've got these other proposals, which are these twelve sided buildings, so just a little strip. So I just like to see the spirit of the NBR zoning very true to whatever extent possible has come for this work.
Is there anyone else here tonight who would like to make the follow-up? Anyone sign up?
Uh, no, Mr. Tower was the only one.
There anyone online? That case, I'll move on to our first application decision. Thanks. Um, TB twenty five oh six, fourteen might in place. Um, did you receive the? Yes, or actually they yes, okay. Great. Um. So. Are you confused that really? Um, so I'll just read through the specific conditions, this items that we've scheduled before. Um, so I have a note on it. Uh, number one, this resume this revenue, which involves we listen to one of these well, as a true bedroom well, or a newer bedroom. Um. But why I think this are general conditions, uh. Were there any questions for? Last item. In that case, uh, like to get motion to approve TB twenty five oh six, fourteen might in place with the specific conditions listed here. So. Second, second, and can we have a call?
Sure. Rachel? Nikki? Rich?
Hi.
Terry?
Hi.
Sac?
Hi.
So you go if you get that signed and
And Gary, I'll need two copies. Yeah, if you can, I have one. You have another one? Okay. Yeah, I do. I need two copies if you can get me the other one. Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
What's up? Uh, we have TB twenty five eleven by Prospect Street, seven Prospect. And since it's a new type of application for us, like maybe you can just
Sure.
explain the process, how you.
You you have a copy or you want me to give? Very beautiful.
So we see the lesser of two evil, it's either uh, it's it's not too small, it's it's a minor subdivision. And in the part of the new law, there's a lot line through there. So what this does is you know, adjust a lot more for the improper side or sort of actually the four people that let's spread. And now lot number seven, number seven prospect.
If, yeah, if you look at the um, the findings. Um. So in order to be considered a lot line adjustment, you need to start with however many lots you start with and end with either the same or less. In this case, they have two lots. Uh, the one structure was pre-existing non-conforming in that it did not meet the twelve foot, uh, twelve and a half foot side yard setback. Uh, it came, we weren't quite sure where the lot, where the survey line was at the request of both the building department and this board and the ZBA. Uh, the app, the owner had a new survey done and found that it did not, uh, they could have continued being non-conforming, but they had the ability, because they're the owner of both lots, to correct the problem. So they now will have a side yard setback of twelve and a half feet. You can see on the plan, there's a small piece at the border between the two that's being conveyed from five to seven. And if you look at the findings, these are the part of the local law that it uh, addresses. And um, so you're not, this board is not approving it because if you were approving it, it would be a subdivision. All you're simply doing is the law now removes these from subdivision and calls these lot improvements. What you, this board is doing is certifying that's what is presented meets the zoning standards or at the very least makes them more conforming, less non-conformant. You may have situations where they can't quite get to not the conforming status, but they can get better. In this case, we were able to achieve success. Right. And so the two statements that are required on the map are on there. I verified that. And so the the certification, the statement that is on the end of page two is part of the local law. That's what the chair is signing. It's saying these plans are acknowledged by the village of New Falls for recording purposes only to represent an exempt lot improvement in accordance with one seventy nine dash sixteen point one. The village of New Falls subdivision regulations, this is the important part, no subdivision approval is required or given. So we're just authorizing him to now file these maps with the county.
Okay. Um.
And then at some point, I anticipate they'll be back with a new application to resolve the other questions, but this is step one.
Or that case, we have the motion to uh, through the lot line adjustment for five and seven.
Just if you can use the word certify, not approve. Lot line improvement. Yeah. A lot improvement can be one of two things. This is a lot line adjustment. It's one of the criteria. So either language is fine.
Certify the lot line adjustment for five and seven. All favor?
Aye. Thank you. Mike, there's someone looking.
Thank you very much.
Next, can we have TB twenty four oh seven? No, one forty seven, one forty nine, one fifty one. So finally, designer review colleagues. Yeah, there'd be a hang of there were, no. Um, you um, like this, this meeting. Uh, I guess maybe maybe we can just talk to them briefly and then we'll we'll get into the details.
Sure. Uh, so before we do that, I want to get our team, uh, it's in the Zoom room. So we have Stark hip from the Villar Traffic Engineer, uh, Pearl, uh, Kacheko, uh, she is with David Bert Architec. Um, and I missed out, Pat Chaco, I just want to make sure I got that right. Mike Boindor, to my right and left, the custom landing bronze. And then I, we should have Danielle Carr from the Development Agency also. She's our landscape architect. There she is. Um, our whole team here. Um, so just a little bit summary on the submissions, since the closure of the public hearing. Um, this board, we submitted a updated site plan based on comments from your team for and staff. Uh, that submission went on May one. Now separately, there was a submission to the BRB and we met with the BRB at the end of April and they provided their comments to this board. Uh, just so you know, uh, we are on track to make another submission to the BRB tomorrow, so we can be in front of them on May twelfth and hopefully finish out their consultation and review process, responding to those comments that we received from that body. And then separately, we may have it in there filed, uh, but just so you know, we reached out to the Walkfield Valley Land Trust, um, to have them take a look at the proposed rail trail connection, um, as their role as stewards. And so we are waiting to hear back from them, but they do have our site plan and some information regarding that proposed rail no connection. So it's kind of a summary of their submission that we've made recently. Um, now turning to our submission of May one, just some things I wanted to highlight based on the comments we received from this board. We increased the amount of proposed parking. So previously, we proposed overall one hundred fifty eight parking spaces. We now propose one hundred eighty parking spaces. That includes an increase of eleven onsite parking spaces, so from one thirty four to one forty five, and also increase of eleven land bank parking spaces from twelve to twenty three. To be responsive to the comments we received from this board and staff regarding the amount of parking that would be necessary. I know that DTS previously previously signed off as a village consultant on a lowered proposed amount of parking spaces, uh, but we did want to increase that based on the comments we received. Now, we also added screening to the.
Max, can you clarify the one eight, the one eighty includes the land bank or does not include the land?
It includes, okay.
We have some question about, please, um, in some of the projects we've had where there's land back spaces, we have discussed an explicit assessment of how parking is being used um, availability in different uh, points to determine whether the parking that's been developed is adequate at some point in the project's use. Uh, forgive me if I'm just, without last meeting, this, uh, some kind of uh, practice like that that is discussed, the formula that we probably use to evaluate whether we want to unbank the land bank spots.
So I discussed this briefly with uh, Max and Taylor, uh, and I've asked them to propose language that we would include in the decision that would then set the criteria for when Alex, the building inspector, could uh, uh, state that those became necessary. Um. If if this board wants to come up with, you know, their own language, that's certainly fine. I figured I would allow them to offer a suggestion. Obviously, we're not going to build them or ask them to build them two or three at a time. Um, we're going to say, you know, you need to build five or you need to build however many now. So I think there's, I agree, there should be strict criteria as to when and how it gets called for. Um, but.
And because it also involves data collection to either provide evidence that you don't have to create more or to
Yeah, but it's my understanding, and Emily can certainly correct me if I'm wrong, that the building inspector ultimately would be the one who has the the wherewithal to mandate that they be constructed at a certain time. And I did ask what the timeframe is of construction of these and was assured pretty much less than thirty days, which seems to make sense that it could be constructed relatively quickly.
Some thoughts about that may seem a little bit radical. Please bear with me because I just, I hate the idea of more pavement. Um, and if you look at the building, you have some space on the on the ground floor. And if you look around town, you can see that much of the retail space is not rented out on the buildings that have required that. Um, the zero place was built over ten years ago. Their place is still empty. This church street, I mean, it's all over. So one thing I was thinking of was that even though it might involve modifications to the building, if you, if some of the first floor were indoor parking, you would solve all your problems at once because then you would still be able to, you would be able to still make money on the space. Because if fifteen percent of the apartments are affordable, eighty five percent are going to be unaffordable. Most people have probably been home nice cars that they keep indoors. And so I feel like that would solve the problem. We'd have to land back the spaces. And if, I don't know whether that technically could be considered retail, since you would be renting the parking spaces. Um, you know, obviously it would be to your, mostly to your, it would be the ones who really want that because then they could go out in the winter, they're going to have to go outside, get your car, you know, the things, those kind of. So I don't know how the board feels about it, but I think it would really solve. It would solve two problems at once, the two biggest problems they have, the parking and the first four spaces.
Well, I can just respond to that, you know, I, I agree with you. Podium parking under buildings is a great use of parking. But it's generally cost prohibitive on, on projects like this. We did look at that related to projects. And it. It, it just, it, it's, it's a completely different type of building. Like you're, you're a few different stages higher in the type of building that you develop. And that's much more expensive than, than it just kind of.
Even than having what's going to be pretty much empty retail space for decades.
You don't know that. There's not that empty retail. And, and by the way, all the retail spaces in the place are.
No, it's not the space in the middle. There's a big space in the middle. It's so empty. I just want to buy it yesterday.
It, I think they have a tenant, maybe it's not open yet, but.
Well, there's two big spaces on church street.
Well, either way.
It would be my advisement that the board works with the assumption because if you're assuming that it's not going to be occupied, then. That there's no point in having the space, so.
And I just want to point out that land bank spaces are green until they're built. So, you know, we're not just going and adding those right away. We are showing eleven if it is permanently built and what we previously proposed on the plan and those with the eleven bit land bank spaces that we had. Previously in, in the north. Uh, east corner of the project. And that was based on discussions we had at the last meeting. It's why we did that and why we look for more land bank spaces in here or elsewhere in the country. And I would also note, just based on the public comment that you received earlier, we are striving to achieve the goals and limits and caps of the MBRs on the district. By having that retail frontage operate on the entire Chestnut Street frontage there. Um, and so looking forward to having that eighty-seven hundred square feet, where's our retail space contributing to vitality of this forward corner. Uh, just wanted to note that. But we, as Mike said, land base spaces would be green until determined by the village that they would be necessary. The definition will be for how that is triggered. I know, for example, City Beacon has in their code line item that says when it's determined by the building apartment to be necessary, then they're put to use within a certain amount of time. You guys to craft that and adjust, you feel appropriate. Uh, but we do feel very strongly that this deadline, for that, for that's a nice balance of. Vitality of retail options, of amenity spaces, including the beauty as a whole, while also preserving space for parking and reducing demands on parking for the proper neighborhood. And having those residential units and that rail trail connection. That's a very careful balance, all these different elements.
I have a related question. Thanks to the, the related question that, that was connected to the public comment we got. Am I correctly remembering that there was a variance required to the. Approving of the residential space on the ground floor? There's not a variance.
No, because this is accessible. It does not need a variance. If it were not accessible, then I think it would be.
It requires a special use unless it is accessible.
It's only the fronts that has to be commercial. And if, if the front were to be residential, it would need a variance.
So just naming the additional residential units accessible means that they are.
They have to be built to accessible standards.
Making them, yeah, design.
Correct.
Standards makes them, makes, makes for that exclusion. It was not, it does not need a variance. It needs that.
The project didn't need to sign yard variance for that.
Just in relation to the previous speaker's comments, how many spaces is that? How many units is that? On, on the ground floor? That's okay. I'm just, I'm just thinking about his comments about the ADA spaces versus the number of ADA units. That might be something and I freely admit I have not compared the two, but that may be something the board. You may not necessarily need a one for one because not every accessible unit will have a vehicle specifically attached. But you may want a certain percentage of ADA spaces in. Return for that.
Unit won't necessarily be occupied by accessible.
They may be and they may not be. Yeah. Correct.
Well, conversely, there's many people who could benefit from an accessible unit. But they don't have a disability such that it, that they get a parking seat.
Agreed.
We are, I just want to point out, we are providing two additional spaces in what it may require. Amount of parking sits. But not by any reason, I'm pretty sure. No, but we want to make sure we see that requirement still with that potential margin. And then I also just wanted to note that I have some numbers here, but it's, it's around. So there was some discussion regarding the area of the first floor. So there is twenty-three thousand eight hundred eighty-five square feet dedicated residential on the first floor. And then the eighty-seven hundred square feet of commercial space and then that entire frontage, that's not a, a small fraction. When you look at the square footage of the first floor as compared to the eighty-seven hundred square feet. So we are, we want to make sure we have a true excuse. And then, Carol, I don't know.
And then just to clarify, the number of units on the first floor is thirty-one.
Thirty-one, okay.
And I appreciate your, you know, neighbor's comment about, well, the original intent, but I think there's also. Economics and market demand have been played here, which we're seeing from the applicants. The code written so specifically that requires commercial and professional, either retail or professional across the entire first floor. It was only meant to be the fake with the facade and. And then the accessibility exception. So. You know, all, all these projects are meeting the code without variance. It's by accident. Remember this. But. What the, what the neighbor mentioned is also true. It's just. I think we need to enforce any of that.
I think, you know, the question was whether a full twenty percent reduction in traffic spaces should be allowed based on excuse.
Yeah. Right. That's what I was just going to say that, that what's required now is a hundred and eighty point seven because. I did clarify for them and they had not included in the calculation. In addition to the one for every five hundred square feet of, of commercial, there need to be one space per use or per. Entity, which added another six spaces. So they're now required to have a hundred and eighty point seven. And with the twenty-three land banks, they're providing a hundred and eighty. So in essentially, they are no longer asking for that twenty percent variance. They're, they're basically land banking the, the twenty percent. And those will be built, they're earmarked to be built if needed. So they're not asking, in my opinion, for the relief anymore.
All of these unknown variables.
I would think that at least whenever a new C L is sought for. Commercial states would be a trigger to.
That would be a very good.
But there may be more than that.
Yeah, that would be a very good suggestion.
And we're happy to support staff on crafting. Um, can you refresh my memory? Does the commercial space go all the way around the end, you know, the southern end of that? Also, because they are a difficult city. You're talking about the landing spaces or? So it's a, the southern end of, you know, the building sticks out. Is that all?
You know, I think about you best. Carol, do you want to pull up the architectural site plan so they can see that first floor layout? It would either be the first floor plan or the architectural site plan. I'll defer to you.
Yeah, let me share that.
Thank you. Because if you think it is.
Do you need permission, Carol? Or do you have, are you able to share?
I'll check now.
I think I know the interface on the promise. So I want to make sure Carol's planning to look at.
Yeah, I need permission. I think I have it.
Yes, yeah.
So Carol, can we zoom in on the southern end there, that retail space at the bottom?
Yep.
Yeah, if we can zoom in. So it looks like it's still buffering, but even, even with my old glasses, I think I can read the label retail there and the southern facade facing onto the plaza. And northern one looks like it's partial. Correct. And then we, we introduced that plaza area at the south end. Uh, so folks could enjoy time outside and nice weather in front of that retail space. You know, it's a little jumpy. Um, under our chat box there, you can see that plaza area. So. How's it, how's it looking on your end, Carol? Is it? Is it buffering?
Yeah, it's buffering. Um, let me try something.
I think we see it.
Yep. It's, this is fun. Yep. Yeah, you could see under the, above the word something, you can kind of see it there. Yeah. Oh, and on our site plan, we have evergreens. Or is that Danielle's have evergreens for that area or the southern end? Can you explain a little bit the vegetation?
Sure. So are we talking about? The south property line where along the shared driveway or are we talking about the rear of the site?
Uh, the, the first, uh, along the shared property line is folks turning off Chestnut. I see three trees there. I just want to.
So outside of the retail space in the walkway, there is a fairly large stormwater planter. And that is planted with flowering and shade trees and has smaller plants underneath. As you move to the west or to the left in the island between the parking lot there along the south property line and the shared driveway. Now I think like Carol is, somebody's moving through the site plans. So. In the island between the parking lot, south parking lot, I'll call it, and the shared driveway. Those, that's a combination of flowering trees and shade trees. And the vegetation beneath will be an, essentially a nomo vegetation.
Thank you. Yeah. Carol, don't move anything. It's perfect. Thank you so much. And thank you.
Exactly. Did you have a thought about the north? Street facing. Facade and whether not having that we full retail takes away from the. You know, from the, from the, from the appearance and the sort of intent of the commercial retail space on the ground floor. Right. But that one is half the residential. So if you're coming south on thirty-two and you're looking at some of the apartment. Or whoever lives in that apartment has thirty-two, thirty-two headlights coming into their apartment all day.
So, um, Carol, if we can go to the, the north end, so we can take a look. Appreciate it.
I think some of it is the function of the different type of, different driveway. Because the south is the shared and the north is a straight in to some degree.
We do see the landscaping there, the block it, but. You know, my main concern asking about the, the southern end is like that felt more like. The part of the public plaza that, that would get more pedestrian and peaceful traffic. I do think either the spirit of the code is to provide those commercial spaces where people are, are going to be walking in. So I, I think, you know, around this northern corner, that's less of the case. However, that does seem like a good option to, you know, that would be the place to add more commercial spaces. We wanted to suggest that.
Carol, I believe we have a diagram that shows the breakdown of the retail spaces on that first floor. Uh, we want to take a look at that on the northern end. And while that's loading, I'm going to grab. So the, about his path, the width of that northern end is dedicated to retail. Now, a- as noted, um, the difference between the northern end and the southern end is that southern end was designed, what's your rating? To achieve that shared driveway, which allowed us to extend the building to the south, to the south, but also introduce that pedestrian plaza there and then wrap that retail around. Um, we wanted to, uh, wrap the retail to the extent that was feasible. Uh, while keeping in mind the fact that we had to have our driveway on our property at that point. Also, just as, as the board knows, just north of here is the most used property. And there's pretty significant screening proposed along this edge. For folks traveling up and down that Chestnut Street corridor, particularly traveling southwards on that corridor. They will see that retail space still. You're going to have to look pretty far down the stretch before you see that one unit proposed there. Uh, so we wanted to make sure that it did wrap around the corner there on that northern end. And also you'll see the generous pedestrian plaza we have there to help activate that space as well.
With your question, Rich, I think it's more likely that parking lot lighting, car headlights are going to shine into those units than Route thirty-two. Just looking at the angle.
Yeah, I'm, I'm thinking as much about the rest that's living there, the lights in their, in their apartment, but I'm also just thinking about. The, the appearance of the building and up and it's seen from the street and. It's meant to look like, as opposed to looking like the dense ground floor apartment buildings, it's meant to look like. As Neil said, a more complete street experience than apartment. You're saying would be pretty hard to see. It's hard to tell without, you know, some sort of rendering or something, but. I, I don't have a strong feeling about it because I'm also, again, just, uh, uh, I, I do also appreciate just the economics and the where the demand is. But if we are looking to enforce the spirit of the code. That would be the only other facade that I would, you know, consider. Making completely retail because it would be pretty attractive as a, as a storefront or other, other. Professional office appearance when you're approaching it.
So on this rendering that we were sharing, you wrote the, that kind of station that has that top to down windows along that resale, retail space on the northern end. Um, as folks are coming down to help contribute to that visual feel and the reinforcement of the retail aspect of the property. And then to the right, it's someone's department. So that actually to me, the more I see this, the more I'm like, we have to be, make more sense to wrap that retail through the rest of that. I, I also understand, looking at the plan, there is an access point between the retail space and that residential unit. We would have to take a look at compliance with fire code, for example, and understand how that access point ties into the rest of the residential units. I would definitely bring that message back to our team and take a look at that. Um, I know there's a lot of work that's been put into the balance of the retail and the unit development and life of the economic, uh, concerning goals. And also still satisfying the requirements of the MBR. Uh, but we hear the message and we, we can, um, I know that we're, you know, coming closer to the end here. We can have that conversation with our team and get answers for you on that. Yeah. Compared to now, that's what it's, uh. It just seems like that this is the end of this is the application of the design. I do think that southern end has that benefit of that fact that they were able to remove the driveway and get that plaza in there to help activate the retail. But I'll definitely agree with our team on that. And by virtue, by way of the ratios you described, it's on the ground floor, it's, there's thirty one units of residential, it's something seventy five percent residential, twenty five percent commercial. If that apartment is a thousand square foot unit, I think it would be a reasonable adjustment. Yeah, thanks.
Is it really not having windows on the north side? With the apartment?
I think that was a subject of the rendering, um. Yeah, I don't know if we have any, um, two D elevations of that north side that we can brown.
Well, I can show the elevations.
I think we're fine. Okay. Just, I'd like that to be considered. And I think that's a original question made me think about it more carefully and I think that would be an improvement.
I agree. Well, I disagree, but that's what this is all about. I just think, you know, we desperately need housing in this community. Removing that one unit, you're getting very close to losing affordable housing. You're not there, but we said, that's right. We're getting very close. But both, but my point is, my overall point is, I think we need more housing than we need commercials. I would rather the, uh, the residential states. However, come on back and we'll go.
Okay, that, that actually brings me to one of the items that we wanted to talk about tonight, um, the affordable housing plan. Did you put together a list of those units and what types of units would be affordable housing?
If I could jump in, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Uh, the Affordable Housing Board met on April twenty second. And among other things, one of the things we talked about was uh, the Affordable Housing Board coming back to the planning board with a recommendation for the unit mix. The only affordable housing. And next that the Affordable Housing Board is recommending to you is, uh, seven studio apartments, ten one bedroom apartments, and three two bedroom apartments.
There's no three bedrooms, Carol?
There's not, no. So, you know, we, we made this recommendation um, based on looking at the people who've been applying over the past many months. We have in the past had a difficult time filling two bedroom apartments. And frankly, the vast majority of people that we see applying for assistance through the village are one in two person bands.
So they haven't needed studios or one bedrooms?
That's it. That's it.
Then we noted that, um, proposal in our letter too. So that's, um, that mix has been accepted by, by your team?
And just one question, in terms of the accessibility, if there's that thirty one units on the ground floor, is there an affordability recommendation that goes with accessibility?
No, we, we didn't look into that. We didn't, but you know, obviously I think uh, all of this is going to look to have the units distributed throughout the building in some fashion. Uh, yes, I would hope that some of them could be on the ground floor. Uh, but.
But not all.
That's no, no.
Well, thank you for doing that and making that recommendation to the back to go. Um. Did you, yes, so since we have the landscaping as well, there was many, um, questions, uh, landscaping from this board. And by the way, I'm by the way, Danielle, uh, hundred three.
I was trying to get on the line and landscaping is kind of hard to do it online, but is the landscaping then responsive to the neighbors' requests that was at the, uh, prior to this one, uh, requesting some coverage for their, their physical impact on the building of the home?
Want to see anything shared, Rich? I can.
Not necessarily asking.
Okay.
So there was additional landscaping grabbed. I'll leave those comments. I'll, I'll let Danielle walk through those additions specifically. Uh, but a lot of the emphasis on that addition was along the western to a lot of, uh, not all the rail trail westerns, yeah, things orient myself. Every, every meeting is a different direction, uh, for every project. Um, but along that western line, along the rail trail there, um, Danielle, if you want to kind of just surmise the additional landscaping you added, I really appreciate it.
Sure. Is that something you want me to share or does everyone have that in front of them?
It's fine. We're, we do a high level.
Well, um, it's the additional planting that we're showing is pretty simple. It's along the, I'll say the full length of the western property line, um, and up along the edge of the parking. So runs, um, yeah, the, the full length of the parking lot and it's a very long hedgerow of shrubs, gray dogwood. And then at the ends of each of the parking access drives behind the shrubs are evergreen trees. And these were added, um, in response to comments that the DRB provided, um, to, and these are to mitigate the light trespass from vehicles that are parking in the lot back there. So plants are spaced fairly closely, so they grow in quickly. Um, the gray dogwood that we're proposing is a fast growing, um, good at erosion control, fairly tolerant of animal browsing, um, disease resistant. Um, it is not, um, evergreen. Um, it loses its leaves in the winter, but the branching is, is fairly thick. Um, and then again, as I mentioned, there are evergreen trees at the ends of the driveway.
Thank you. Thank you. So that's, um, that's the, he said, the, the the, the questions the neighbors had about any way that there could be, you know, obstructed or disinterupted. Uh, made them cross thirty two from. Was there anything, there was a conversation about how you who's that? I don't know if that was about providing landscaping on their property. Yes, or on your property. And we, we spoke with, with the neighbors post street when we had proposed in a previous submission, which has been accepted by the neighbors post street, additional landscaping to either be planted by us or funded by us.
And that's been shown on the site too.
Well, it was provided as an exhibit because we.
Yeah, correct, correct. Understood. Yeah.
Uh, all right. Didn't have any other questions about the landscaping, um. Do we have any details on the signage this time? So we submitted elevation with signage. I believe that was in the previous submission to this one, but, um, uh, pull up that Chestnut Street elevation with the signage and then maybe we have the hat that we're going to submit to the DRB tomorrow. Um, so and you know, that may be two different documents. I'll defer to you on the twenty one to pull up first. Uh, but we have the signage put on the elevation. I know the board discussed it and then we had color palettes that I'm prepared on. We will be submitting the DRB tomorrow to get a preview of that. Um, I will, um, defer to Carol on what's the best document to share on that front. Like it's buffering. So Carol, thank you. This is the elevation. Um, do we have the other spec sheet as well with the color palette that we circulated earlier today? And yeah, um, Carol, just saying that you are muted and that'll help or not? Let me, um.
Sorry, okay.
There we go. Thanks. Um, so we have that North Chestnut Street.
Do you want me to share? No?
Oh, yes. It'd be the, the palette, just so they can idea of the, of the text and the backgrounds to signs.
Yes, the, so for the retail signage, we were thinking on, uh, providing earth tones for, uh, the color of the background. There, uh, we have selected some pantone that, uh, everyone can pick from. It's from Nova Scotia to frosted mint for the background and to give it a contrast for the text, it will be a black color. And it'll be this kind of signage, uh, hanging from the, uh, the overhang of the facade.
So right now we're looking at the kind of the zoomed out elevation, but do you have the, the three color, the little boxes that we can show as samples?
Yes, uh, are you not seeing my screen?
I have the elevation of the overall street.
Got it. Okay. Let me reshare.
Appreciate it.
Works. Okay. Here it is. Are you seeing now the rendering with the palette?
No.
No?
We do see your cursor.
That's me.
Okay. Just might be the difference between one window versus the one. Yeah, or, yeah, or screen. Yeah. Uh, we, so Carol, just saying that we see an Adobe document, uh, twenty twenty five oh five six New Paltz.
Yes, uh, are you seeing that one?
Yes, but we don't see the color palette. We see the black.
Hmm. Let me try just sharing my whole screen and see if that works.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Is that better? Uh, are you seeing the rendering now?
No, I think you need to close what you have open. Cause it's taking priority.
What about now? Are you seeing the elevation? Uh, sorry, the rendering and the palette? No?
Girl, we see the file that's labeled like twenty oh five or twenty twenty five oh six. So we saw, and there was a color paddle on the bottom left hand corner.
Yeah, I was, I was seeing what you were sharing.
I think you're right, actually, Cara or Danielle. I think I did listen.
The meeting.
Yeah, I think the.
I can see your plans fine.
The live meeting they have dropped. Maybe they were having trouble on their end because I was seeing what you were sharing as well.
Oh, you were sha- oh, you were.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. With the color palette on the bottom left hand side and the rendering up to the right.
Yeah, okay. Now we are left out. I don't know if you what we should do, like leave and come back?
Well, it did, does still show Village New Paltz as the host. So they're, they're still here on the participant list.
Oh.
Oh, here we go.
Oh, thank you.
I don't know why we're not seeing video.
Um. So, um, just a note on, on the decision, we're going to provide information and samples regarding siding, uh, regarding the railing material, regarding the signage pallets. Oh, a miracle. Uh, just so you'll see a preview of what we're gonna submit tomorrow. Um, including the background of the signs, the text of the signs, um, penetration details with those, uh, ceiling to floor, uh, windows and doors. And, um, there's going to be variation of, of the metal and the, um, uh, the wood looking siding. And that's gonna help for diversity of design along that Chestnut Street frontage and all that's gonna be packaged up for the VRB and then with their products.
And what's referred to as timber throughout the VRB review and your points, it's wood looking or timber?
Yes, so and then there was a vision on this point. Um, there was a comment that natural timber had been proposed, so that wasn't what was proposed. What was proposed was engineered wood. Um, that would just help maintain longer into the future. Um, so right now, uh, what we have proposed is a fiber cement panels by Alura. I'm not exactly correctly, uh, but it's going to look like timber, uh, just going to have stronger quality and be able to last longer, produce some agent stops. Um, and we're going to present that to the RV and we're trying to get some samples to the RV on that as well. Thank you. Okay. Think that's terrible.
Yeah, I'm taking care of that right now. Somehow in that process, we lost.
Um, interesting. Well, were there any other, um, question about that about the the most recent round of submissions? Um. Thank you. Everything. Um, the one last thing I wanted to do tonight was, uh, discuss the rec fees for this application. Um, as you're aware with, with the other projects, uh, in the MBR, we required rec fees in their state of criteria in the code, um, that determines if a rec fee is required. So there are new questions that we need to answer this board. Um, number one, is there a need for recreation areas in the village, including improvement of existing recreation areas?
Oh, I see.
Yes, we're in full agreement there. Uh, two, will the new residential units for this remodel increase the demand on the village's recreation facilities? Um, yes, and three, can suitable parks or recreation areas adequate size to meet this demand located on the site?
No.
And yeah, I mean, you've chosen to, to not, you know, take up a large part of the site with recreation areas. So I think we are in agreement here that, uh, rec fees are required and we're kind of to the village board, uh, who will set the, uh, amount. Um, other than that, Emily, was there anything that you should be looking at tonight?
No, we can, we got what we need to.
Okay.
See them again. To maybe.
Let's see. Okay. Great. Mr. Chairman, um, I'll, I'll defer to you and the board and staff just because the outlook here is going to be RV. Hopefully wrapping up our consultation with them next week and coming back to you with their formal recommendation. Um, and the, the update on the question in regards to that northern real retail space. Um, which I understand is the last open item from this board, um, based on what you can see. Um, is there any way we could start working with staff, understanding that there's still items to be addressed and discussions we had, but, uh, start working on crafting so that condition language, for example, be triggered for the standing parking. Um, just so we can start drafting language and what we can consider and change down the road. Um, yeah, I, I mean, I'm not, I'm not just, you know, starting to work on that language. I I don't think drafting a full resolution right now is, I think it's a little early for that, but I think, yeah, getting out, getting.
I think, yeah, getting out, getting a list going, which has specific conditions, um.
Understood, so we will reach out to your council, um, to see what kind of, uh, conditions they would like our input on, um, to help craft, just based on our experience with similar projects and projects that have been reviewed by this board and past precedents established by this board, and we, we just want to help. So we, uh, will reach out to staff to help that facility, perhaps, to your council. Okay?
Sounds good.
Cool. Thank you. Looking at, looking at CB forty-five oh nine, one forty-five, you're pressed actually.
He's online.
Good evening. Nope, good, good evening, uh, Chairman, Members of the Board, Charlie Gottlieb, I'm sorry, I'm not there in person this evening, but I had a, a issue come up this morning. Um, I believe you all likely recall this project, it's at one forty-five North Chestnut Street. Um, we are coming in for a site plan amendment. The project is well under construction, as I'm sure folks have driven past the project site. Um, we have been working with the project you just heard from, one forty-seven North Chestnut Street. We now have a, a design of that, our northern joint, uh, access with that project, which will eliminate a curb cut on North Chestnut Street. That is one of the site plan amendments that we are coming in for currently. Other revisions to the previously approved project, um, other than the joint access, include some revisions that were requested by New York State DOT. Um, the relocation of the garbage refuse area, so now there will be an enclosed dumpster on the rear of the project site. And we are looking to add one additional residential unit, which will be an accessible, fully accessible unit to the project, that will now be a total of sixty-nine residential units, as opposed to the sixty-eight that was previously approved. There's also an addition of a parking space to facilitate that additional, uh, unit. Uh, there's also gonna be a reduction in commercial space. The planning board previously approved seven thousand two hundred and nineteen square feet of commercial space, that's now being reduced down to five thousand seven hundred and eighty-two square feet. There are no changes to the elevations of the building, the mid, building materials, the look of the building, that's all staying the same. Um, and if I could, I'll, I'll share my screen, uh, we also have uh, Brittany Shackley on the line from LRC Group, our project engineer, who will stop me if I'm saying anything incorrectly, but I just wanna show you the general area of where the changes are going to occur.
You should have it now, Charlie.
Great, thank you.
While you're opening that, could you explain why, uh, you're adding one residential unit, reducing the commercial retail space?
Sure, so that's based on market trends, so now that the project is under construction, um, we were originally approved in two thousand and three, uh, now we're seeing more of a housing need and wanted that space occupied by a residential unit as opposed to a commercial space.
Thanks, glad.
Sure.
How many bedrooms are in the unit? The new unit?
That'll be a one bedroom. Can you guys see the site plan in front of you on the screen?
I have not so much. You see your whole Zoom screen?
My home screen, alright. How about it? So the extent of the changes is fully located on this northern portion of the project site that's outlined in red. Uh, mainly, you'll see along this northern property line, the access drive, and mainly everything has been shifted north so that this joint access can be facilitated. Uh, the changes related at the DOT's request was, and this is actually, has been updated, this stop bar and this crosswalk is now moved up to about here, based on DOT comments that we received. The recycling and trash enclosure that's fully enclosed is located in this area. Um, and additional parking spaces located here. Those are really the extent of the minor changes, um, that we've proposed. As I've said, we're well under construction, um, and we're here this evening to get any preliminary comments from the planning board, see how we can address those and schedule a public hearing.
Yes, I wasn't here for the original proposal, but they're not a trash in the original site plan, and is that so current sufficient for?
It's been moved, it was in a different location.
It's just been moved and we think that it just, you know, quite frankly, looks small.
Uh, it was the, the moving and Brittany craft, if I'm wrong, it was relocated to remove it away from pedestrian and uh, off-street parking spaces and for an easier access for the garbage truck.
So originally, the, uh, trash was actually inside of the building, so it got moved outside of the building to be able to put it more access, accessible to everyone. And then it eliminates the trash chutes and everything inside.
And if I recall correctly, it was where the loading zone originally was.
Yep.
So instead of the garbage truck coming in and internal to this site, it can easily access to the rear.
And can you point out on the, uh, site plan where the retail space is being eliminated and the, the units being added?
Brittany, do you know the answer to that question? It is on the first floor, I believe it's in this area. But we can, um, provide that to the extent Brittany doesn't know.
Yeah, I think it's actually kind of where your mosque was originally, right by the handicap spot, I believe it's over there, uh, to your right a little bit. I think it's in that area, but we can confirm that.
So it still conforms with the requirement that the front, the thirty-two facing remains retail, it's not eliminating some of that.
Correct, and, um, we had emailed, um, to Mr. Baden earlier today and to Emily, the specs that demonstrate that it's fully accessible.
But those are loaded in the municipal app, the ADA specs.
Two questions, different answer to your, it's not the answer to the question. Your question is about whether the, um, frontage, if that's the right term on this building, is still co-compliant by being, um, full with commercial and retail. And when you residential, you interrupt that frontage of commercial and retail. And it's not misthrowing, it's not specific as to where, what, where you're staying.
So all commercial and retail is still on the frontage of North Chestnut Street.
And there must be a version of this plan, though, that has the units of residential that, you know, detailed within the ground floor square footage, right?
Yeah, this amendment, you mean, we can provide you guys with the floor plan of that first floor where the change is going to occur, if you'd like.
I think we'd like to see that.
Okay.
It's not, doesn't reach a tipping point of another, no. Let me. Um. About this.
The entire, uh, front, uh, front facing section is retail, an entire wing there, or is it divided between retail and apartments?
Uh, this entire, this area right here where my cursor is?
Wait, I mean, but does it go all the way across? Or is the backside of the apartment?
Uh, the backside here is apartments?
Yeah, okay. And so originally.
Sorry, I, I can chime in there, the, the whole frontage remains commercial and it wraps the southern corner. So it just wraps the southern corner there exactly where the cursor is, and then to the northern end of the building, it also wraps the corner. And then if you move your cursor down a little bit, where you can kind of see it says, yeah, in that area, we actually moved our gym to that space. And we added the residential unit where the gym used to be, which is on the, um, yeah, in that area. So there is not a residential unit, um, you know, wrapping kind of the, the backside of that leg of the building, but rather the gym.
So, um. So. Emily, can you just talk to us a little about the, uh, seeker process for this application?
Yeah, so, um, but, but I was suggesting for, for, we already did a full seeker review, a, a negative declaration for this project. And so, um, the board can decide whether, um, this change, um, if the project as represented with this change still falls within the seeker review that we already did, and so then we don't need to do any further seeker review? Does that make sense?
Yeah, yeah, um, I mean, I would, I would say that it does, I don't think these changes are drastic enough, yeah.
But it's just that in our decision. Does that sound okay to you, Charlie?
Yeah, absolutely, and, and one correction, I misspoke, um, Lauren with the, the property owner and the developer, um, that is actually gonna be a two-bedroom unit, not a one-bedroom unit.
Okay, thanks for that.
Yeah, it's a two-bed, two-bath unit, consistent with the rest of the unit, uh, the rest of the two bedrooms in our building.
One other question I have, will you, um, share the floor plan of the ground floor that will help us see back the location of the residential units? We'd be interested in, in just knowing the square footage of the ground floor that's dedicated to, uh, commercial, uh, retail versus residential, just to kind of get a sense of what percentage your building ends up having at that, in that, uh, ground floor space? Just so we can kind of be tracking a little bit about how these buildings are, what, what either consistencies or differences we're seeing in the way the ground floor is being utilized.
Sure, absolutely.
Thanks. Um. Okay, well, there are a few next steps we can take tonight, uh, first, I think this project should be uh, referred to the County Planning Board, so I can get a motion to defer this to the County Planning Board.
So.
There, on favor.
Hi.
Um, and next, the motion to set the public hearing for June the third.
So.
Before I vote, because there are any reasons can't come into the next meeting.
Because of the County Planning Board referral, they won't see this until June, yeah.
Aight. Thanks. Aight. Alright.
Um, and I think that is all for tonight, thanks for coming with me.
Great, good to see you, everyone, have a good night.
Thank, thank you very much.
Charlie, if you can get me that drawing before I send this referral to the county, that would probably be helpful.
Yep, no problem, I'll email the architects now.
Okay, thank you.
Moving on, we have CB twenty-five dash ten, twenty-nine South Chestnut Street. You have, Charlie, you need that in the documents. I, I. So this, uh, fact, uh, we require secrets of, you know, and we're just so pleased to inform the board. We could all see the same thing. So, it's a basically, you just take it up order, uh, um, you don't need sort of an issue, you just have to fill in the form. So. So we're checking this out. For. Things. So, um, the elevations, that hasn't really changed because of, when the book adds the same. It's, it's.
Yeah.
So this is, this is not a new application?
It's an amendment to the existing site plan, so it is a new application. There's two photos of, of what it is now, and he's boxing in that one corner by adding a hundred and, what is it, a hundred and fifteen square feet?
Yeah. Uh, but in that corner, just, it just sucks.
It's already played.
Yeah, maybe.
It's not, uh, reducing the number of parking spaces or?
And there's no change to the number of parking spaces required.
Right.
What about the percent of the, she's firmly able. You see? I didn't see what's changed.
It's, it's paper now and it's becoming building, so it's a, it's a one-to-one trade-off.
Yeah, um. Yeah, you, you, tonight, so start is classify this as seeker type two, so can we get a motion to uh, classify this project as seeker type two?
So.
There, on favor?
Hi.
Hi. And.
So, I, not to interrupt, but I, I just realized, does this need to go to the designer review board?
Um.
It's in the B two.
Alex suggested that it does, and unfortunately, it also needs to go to the county, but, uh, I was a little proactive and sent it to the county already for tomorrow night.
Oh. Why would you say that?
Uh, I called them and asked them and they said, yes, and it, it's any change to a site plan. Because it's on a, a state highway. Uh, it, it does, it doesn't qualify for the exception agreement, it will most likely be a no county impact. But it will be on tomorrow night's County Planning Board agenda, cause when Floyd first came to me, I checked with the county and sent it right away. So he was able to get it on the agenda for tomorrow night.
But for the, the DRB, even though it's in the B two, that doesn't necessarily mean it.
Commercial in the B two goes to the DRB, but, uh, the, the proposal is that the finish looks like it does now, which they've already approved. Um, we could certainly just notify them and ask them if they wanna see it, and my guess is they're gonna say.
Um, yeah, I think, you know, that would be more, more efficient, um.
And Floyd, you missed the opportunity to tell them the color scheme. It's the New Paltz maroon.
Um. So. New Paltz black. Um, in that case, uh, you can also set public hearing, uh, tonight, uh, so can I get a motion to set the public hearing for, uh?
You can do that, May twentieth.
We name, uh, maybe twenty. So, we'll say, I think, on favor?
Hi.
I. Um. Yeah, I think that's that's all for tonight.
Thank you. Thank you. There yet, nobody happened this week, no.
Hey Floyd.
Um, so lastly, we have. Sorry, there's no asking number for this, this is the recent applications and requests and suggestions. Um, we got sort of the name twenty come up with.
Yeah, for the board, I I photocopied the first few pages of their, what they submitted. Um, the rest are photos which would have been a lot of copies, so I have them here.
So eventually, uh David Eric just bought forty-six inch tree. Um, and we were going to essentially just convert it into a retail store, but.
It was it was sold to me as a turnkey as. Um, but upon taking the drywall, that would go, it's a structural damage. But grill, meal of that was a result of the rocket snow fire, which uh caused damage to the fourth pantry. And the site use permit that was filed and. We needed the structural repair to make, so we had to do a tremendous amount of work to install the sound. Um, but actually. First and last thing, um I'd say for a good long. So we put some photographs.
The photos are in that packet.
So in order to.
That's still the thing.
My my budget was uh based upon this turnkey on sharing in reality that you. At a minimum, four thousand dollars to just have a place where it was supposed to be. So what I'd like to do is add um given studio apartments, one of their apartments, uh so that I can. So that I can get this part uh better.
So I guess my question is. Just as a baseline, I read through everything. I understand the economics, but. Um, if it's. On the verge of collapse, adding studio apartments seems unsound and unsafe.
So we have a structural engineer already working out all the plans to make the places structurally sound. And so there's intensive foundation work and. Uh, we have to restructure the front of the building, so like we, there's a scientific glass all around there. He's proposing bringing it down, so it's like rendering on there that kind of shows what we're kind of proposing. Um, the whole back, this is part of what originally started the whole concept of. Bringing in apartments is because that whole back of the building has to be rebuilt. And the foundation was in in like, there is no foundation on the side of the building. Um, it's falling down on the side, there's major um like roof. Uh, the roof's weathering out, right? It's leaking on us and so we. Because we have to, yeah, because we have to rebuild it, we're figuring that if we're rebuilding it, we might as well be putting in. You know, like apartments inside of it, but as well.
The glass in the front is actually a very nice feature, the door.
I know.
It's it's yeah, very unfortunate the way that was installed, it is iconic and uh I I. I, that's one of the things that I love about that building. Unfortunately, the way it was uh constructed, um it's currently being supported by two steel columns. The bottom of which are both rusted out and so it's just kind of floating right out and pulling the front of the buildings towards uh. Yeah, it's it's really, it was a big can of worms. So to answer your question, I basically have to rebuild this entire building. You know, I don't want to tear it down because that adds, you know, with the proximity of the main building that has. So um. The place is pretty much dead, completely roof frayed, uh never breaking steel items instead of. You know, two by fours that are brutally big is, um, so yes, that's that's the reason.
So you're not asking, I guess, because you're, I I I the confusion that we ask is that. It says you need the studio apartments to get the funding and. So what I, it's it's in the site plan that you're asking for permission to build apartments. As part of the rebuilds to get the funding, not to put studio apartments in to fund the. Project. That's that's where the ask got a little bit.
Yeah, maybe I actually probably need to include that, uh basically you're requesting. Uh, that the building classification be changed, like right now it's single occupancy, we're trying to get it next season. Quest for construction.
It's on the cover of the handout that from Alex.
Right, I know.
It's it's on the, it's on the first page.
One of the things we were coming here for is to get this preliminary like. Ideas and requirements that you guys will have for us, because we're trying to, you know, we're. I, we don't want to go in circles. We we all know that like there are all, you've had issues with other buildings in that area and such, so like. We're trying to just make sure that everyone like was happy and. And everything works out in the end. And so one of the things that we're coming here for today was to just get. More information on what we can and can't do and what what are the um. For instance, like we have an issue, you know, parking is going to be an issue. Um, we're right there on Main Street. There are parking spaces in the building that are immediate. So like, those are type of questions we are kind of just kind of looking for resolution.
Basically, the main question is, can we add apartments to this building? Uh, with the fact that it doesn't have space for parking. Um, and that it is currently uh single occupancy commercial. That's the main question.
I I think, you know, we're we're in favor of mixed occupancy buildings in the B two. Um, you know, I don't have a problem with there being apartments above it, but uh. The parking thing, I mean, I guess you you would have to get a variance from the.
Well, we'd have to, yeah, we'd have to review the code and I didn't realize those specific questions Alex and I can probably answer for you of what you would need to do. Um.
You're gonna have it somewhere near it though, if it's on either.
Well, they have to be off street somewhere else for the thousand feet, isn't it? We have to look at the code.
Yeah.
I think you're required to have those parking.
In the past, there have been, uh like from the previous, they had a an informal agreement with Cosler. And in the files I got from town, there actually was a written agreement, it was years ago, it was written due on paper. Uh, for twelve apartments behind. One sound that used to exist uh adjacent to uh the current building. Uh, in addition, uh there is a visible lot within uh a short distance of uh the property. Um, and to be suggested by the engineer or workbench who has done a lot of work around it, that may um. Enable us to not have to find the variance.
I think we're willing to work with you on this solution.
Yeah, actually, the reading it, the mixed use is not only preferred, it's required. If you're building a new building, now admittedly you're not, but certainly mixed use is what we prefer.
I mean, we had, so we had funds already with an engineer. We were just trying to iron out some of the details, see what, like, we didn't want to go forward on. Uh, like coming up with designs if they weren't allowed or weren't even going to be accepted.
One of the considerations is whether there is anything about the building that's that's currently non-conforming. And whether the amount of rehabilitation you're doing to the building would. Require some of those things.
Like the handicap accessibility.
Potentially. Or setbacks or other things. So I would check to, I know how to get into that building, um. It doesn't seem like it's handing out. That's a pre-existing, that's a current non-conforming feature. Uh, you may, I would recommend we look into whether you need to make that conforming because of the magnitude of what's being done. I don't know what exactly triggers that, the the requirement, but.
There was a lot of um documentation from previous owners, this is that issue. Requesting that is not more granted, obviously, I wouldn't like places to be accessible.
So you're answering your question about parking, are you pro- you're proposing two one-bedroom units? So you would need two point two spaces, parking for the residential. And then how many square feet is the commercial? Roughly. So you would need one space for every five hundred, so you need three, so you would need five point two or six spaces total. But, you know, if you want to come in. To the office, we can look at all the requirements and figure out, you know, what the options are.
You're moving the, basically you're moving the first floor down, because you used to have to walk up to get to the first floor of a building.
No, we're not moving the first floor at all. So there, it is a step up to the first floor there. And then there's a, there's stairs inside that go up to the second floor loft area. And so what we were proposing originally was to have the retail on both floors, but with the. With the apartment necessity and all that, that.
Apartments, they were the lawthills, yeah.
What in the back there, um was originally, we were kind of saying, it's like in the back of the building, there's a, there was a kitchen. And it has a short roof and the whole roof and those walls there have to be rebuilt. And so we're saying, instead of just rebuilding them, we go up to the second floor and then get that such apartment. Yes, and so I take what we're gonna end up having to do is pull into. Into the actual second floor of the existing place to get that extra. Square footage for the room to apartments.
And take out all the. Exhaust.
Yes.
Let's take a thing Mexican, what used to be Mexican kitchen burned out and they go, new building took out the exhaust system and it's been sitting in the hour over. I don't know, there was simply to get that.
Yes. Yeah, we're we're not like. We got it done. All right, that's a motion to.